This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thanks everyone. So Committee of the Whole, April 22nd, I'll call the meeting to order. Lindsay, you have a record of attendance. There is no one absent with regrets. Thankful for that. Any declarations of conflict of interest, and you can certainly call it at the time of the agenda item? Additions and deletions, so additions are under number 10, so I'll put 10A. Tax deferral, CAO, because Jeff, that will be yours to discuss, and that is separate from the one about miasta. Any other additions? What have you got, folks?
Yeah, your worship, I have maybe one and a half. I was maybe public participation meetings. And if Chad's on the phone, I don't know if we're going to need a motion, but just Green Street. Put Green Street down and then I'll explain it afterwards.
Good stuff. Thank you. So that's A, B, and C. Anybody else say anything? Good. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, but we changed.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Don.
Second.
Second, my Counselor Jim.
Question.
Hi.
Hi.
Contrary? Motion carry. Thanks, folks. No presentations? Okay, staff report, CAO report, so that just came out, if you have it. Do we have any questions on that, or Jeff, did you want to speak to it or anything?
Uh, no, I, I, so the system I use to generate this report, we've been having a little bit of difficulty with over the last few months, and I apologize for the lateness. We weren't able to actually get a printout till this afternoon, and to be honest, I haven't actually put my eyes on the finished report, so. But I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have arising from it now or at any time in the future.
Okay, good. Any questions for Jeff? Got your name for a second.
Your worship, having had time to read it, so I'll just defer it to another time as he suggests if there's anything, all right?
Thank you, thank you, Cliff. Who just came on the line?
Mario.
Oh, awesome. Welcome.
Oh, yeah.
Fire department report. Any questions there? Operational services, folks.
If anyone doesn't, where, what's the status of our search for a replacement chief?
Do you hear that, Jeff?
Yes, I did, yeah. So we have engaged Jerry Walsh to assist us with that process, and I think I reported a couple of months ago that we had first gone to try to recruit a candidate from the local fire, fire services market, I would say, and we exhausted the possibilities there, and we've gone further abroad. So Jerry's provided us with a short list from the responses that he received from his advertising and inquiries, and so he was doing a preliminary screening of those, of those folks, and we're looking to schedule interviews as soon as possible. Under the circumstances, they'll probably be in a format similar to what we're experiencing here today.
Good.
Thank you, Jeff.
So a follow-up, is the likelihood that we'll be engaging a fire, a fire chief from outside the area, or from outside of our, let's say, our workforce and volunteers?
Yes, that is the most likely scenario at this point. We tried, we tried very hard, I would say, to, to secure a chief from, from within our professional volunteer ranks, and we were hopeful, but we weren't able to make that happen, so not this time around, but Chief Farrell did, did some good work in terms of, I think, preparing the, the way so that maybe not this time, but maybe another time, we would be able to have a and attractive candidates from within. We did this time as well, it's just it, it wasn't necessarily the right time and situation for what we would have thought would have been the best candidate, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Jeff, I, I have a question, Jeff. Because we don't have a chief and we're, and we're obviously not paying salary. We don't, we don't, we lose the value of a chief, but do we save money financially?
Yeah, well, we definitely save money on the, on the salary benefits of the chief.
That's fine, Jeff.
Case frozen.
Okay.
Job as a, as a volunteer deputy chief standing in, in the chief's place during this time, so. Everyone went black on me there.
Oh, you're the only one that gone black there. We can, we can hear you now, we just, you froze.
Now you're back.
Are we back? Okay, so I don't know when I lost you there, but I'm just saying that Mike DeVoo's doing an excellent job for us as a volunteer chief. We are saving some money, but I think it's a lot to put on him as a volunteer, and so as soon as we can get a chief in place, we'll be, we'll be trying to do just that.
Okay, any more questions with regard to fire?
I'm fine. Good.
Okay, operations. Chad? Questions for Chad or anything you want to say to Chad?
Is Chad on the, on the phone, your worship?
Yep, he is.
I gotta, I don't know if we need a motion, but I, I had a concern from a citizen, I might just move it up since Chad's on here right now. On Green Street, which should be on the south side of our Vile Street, there's a one-way street that goes to cross, around Alice Pond to the old Central Tendus School, and one of the residents or constituents on Lewis, Lewis was wondering if there was any consideration, or would they look at making that a two-way street again without the, now that there's no kids going along that corridor going to the school. I just wondered if Chad could look at that, or, or do we need a motion for that?
You need, anytime you're going to direct staff, you're going to need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we direct the traffic authority to look at the Green Street to Ford Street corridor in regards to a one-way sign.
Second.
One-way sign, one-way traffic.
Wade?
Still unpaved, isn't it?
Wade, second by Wade.
Yep.
Go ahead, Cliff. Did you want to say something, Cliff?
It's still unpaved, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, McNeil down.
Yeah, that's what I meant, about half it or more.
It's, it's like, it's, it's, the street's good quality. It's either that hard top or whatever, but I've never had any complaints, or I've driven that street 100 times, and I've never had any problems with it.
Yeah.
Good?
The street is paved. Street is paved and in good, in good repair. We would just have to check to make sure that the width meets the minimum requirements for a local street, but I can check that out tomorrow if the motion is being changed.
Okay, thanks, thanks, guys. Chad, you're gonna, Chad, you're gonna do that? Are you gonna do a diligent job on that? How's that? I got it, Chad, I got it.
Good job, Phil.
Good? Okay.
I'll call, I'll call for the question on the motion.
Okay, all's in favor?
Hi.
Contrary? Motion carry.
Pam, I have one question of Chad.
Okay.
Chad, on, under Traffic Authority, item number three, revert Seminary Street and Collins Street back to two-way traffic due to closure of the Centertown School. Do the two or three citizens that requested that, are they under?
He always freezes.
Is determined.
So Jim, you have to ask the question again because you froze.
All right, it's not the first time I've been frozen. Item number three, under Traffic Authority, revert Collins, revert Seminary and Collins Street back to two-way traffic. Do the citizens who requested that, are they aware that it will be deferred until the school property, the use to the school property is determined?
Uh, I believe so, Jim. The question came up several months ago, and it's only been one inquiry, to my knowledge.
Okay.
Actually, sorry, the person who's called actually lives on an adjacent street, not on Collins or Seminary, I believe.
That's right.
But I can certainly follow up.
I, no, I just want to make sure that the citizen who made the request of you is aware, that's all.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
Okay, anything else for Chad?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Chad, when, on, on the business of the request for the crosswalk for the golf course, isn't, so, so it's Main Street there, but it's also part of the provincial highway network, isn't it?
Uh, I'm not sure if the, I'm not sure if that's still a concert highway, Cliff.
If it is, does that have any bearing on the, you have to go to the province or anything to approve that?
Um, I don't believe, I can look into that. I'm actually, I'm actually leaning towards a decision where it doesn't necessarily warrant a crosswalk. I think a similar request came through to Dave Ernst a few years ago, and I don't have his response here in front of me, but I think his general response was, because the, the traffic volume, there is sufficient time or times for to safely cross the road, and my issue with putting a crosswalk at that location, it kind of gives, it'll give the government some false security, a false sense of security. And that's my only fear. Because if they see a crosswalk there, they may not be as diligent when they cross that roadway.
I would concur for whatever's worth with what.
That being said, we're gonna, we have the infrastructure to do an actual traffic volume count, and my plan is to do that in the next few weeks, to get some good numbers.
Chad?
Go ahead, Don.
I would say that the only thing that I would worry about is the speeding that takes place through that area, so maybe we might need to go do the RCMP or something, because there's an awful lot of fast vehicles passing through from the Rodney House all the way up to that corner. It's very, very unsafe.
Yep, and the, the, the traffic infrastructure that we have actually measures traffic speed as well. So that'll be a report after we do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good. Okay, more questions for Chad? Good. Anything you need to tell us, Chad? You good?
Nope, we're all good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Planning. Anybody reporting on planning these days?
I can't. It's Natalie.
Go ahead, Natalie.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer and give an update on what staff is up to.
Anything for Natalie? Okay, if not, asset management and infrastructure renewal. Mark? Brophy? Any questions for Mark, or Mark, did you want to share something?
Well, I can, I can answer any question, any of the project list there. I do have two small changes. The fire hall tender is changed to tomorrow. We had to issue a late addendum. And the Glee parking, the top slab, the contractor's having some issues, and he's not going to start until May. Issues being can't get masks for his people. They're getting some kind of this robot thing that's going to be able to do the, the underslab demolition without people, because they're, they can't get masks. All the companies have changed to the N95s and surgicals, and he can't get dust masks. So he's not going to mobilize till May.
And what was the first thing you said?
Fire hall tender was supposed to close 2:00. Today's going to be 2:00 tomorrow.
Okay.
Check it out. Check it out, Mark.
Oh, nice mask.
There you go.
Cliff, where'd you get that from?
Oh my God.
They're, they're neat, they're pretty good, they're made in town. Right up on, I'm not advertising for anybody, but they're made in town, anyone can buy them, custom made. I bought 10 of them. So you can wash them out and.
Yeah, they, they, yeah. They're clothed.
We're all going to be wearing a mask here in about three or four weeks. If you want to do anything outside of our homes.
Yeah.
My prediction.
I, I agree, everybody's going to be wearing a mask. They don't protect anything. Okay. So any questions for Mark?
Nope.
We good? Thank you. Finance, Jerry.
I, I can't say it's business as usual, because it certainly hasn't been, but we do continue to work. I've been working with the auditors, getting an audit schedule put together. We're figuring out the details of how to do that remotely, and been working with the management team and, and Jeff to get our budget to the point where we can put something in front of you. As late as about half an hour before this meeting, I emailed Jeff to finally say, with all the, everything considered, I think I have a budget that we can go move forward with, maybe to bring the council and like, see where, what it looks like. But he hasn't even looked at that yet. That's been myself, and then dealing with the different directors on options of reductions and changes because of the situation that we're in. Other than that, staff seem to be working quite well from home and everything, and it's getting done, that needs to be done.
Good, and the tax payments are coming in?
Yeah, we've got, we've gotten some tax payments, and water bills are being paid, so.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so Jerry's, Jerry's right, I haven't had a chance to open that file yet, but we have been meeting every week, once a week, to do an update. Perhaps if council's interested in meeting next week to, to start going through this budget. By then, Jerry and I'll have had a chance to, to go through it, and I'll be well-versed in it, and we can get going with the process.
Any questions for Jeff or Gary on that one?
Just looking forward to the meeting date.
Good stuff. Okay, thanks, Jerry. Uh, Yarmouth Recreation, Frank, Frank's on the line. Any questions for Frank?
I do, just a congratulations first off of naming our volunteers, because it is Volunteer Week, perhaps you could tell everybody about that. And also, how are things going to go when it comes to Volunteer Week and how the celebrations are going now that we're living in the age of COVID?
Yeah, Wade had me on the radio today. We announced the, the two volunteer representatives, John Higbee for the Town of Yarmouth, and Natasha and Andy Hiltz for the municipality. And ideally, we would have been off on Sunday to Casino, Nova Scotia for the big provincial celebrations on Monday. And because of everything, everything's been pushed off to September the 28th. So normally how we operate is, once the provincial awards happen, we have our local reception at Town Hall the, the following week. And so with provincial celebrations happening, September 28th, we're looking at the first Tuesday in October as our local area reception. Of course, with everything being so fluid with COVID-19, we do not know what October will look like, we do not know what September will look like. So there may still be public gathering implications in place that we will have to adhere to, and we'll adjust our volunteer celebrations, but I guess one of the things that we thought we could do is virtually share the information about volunteerism, and I guess Counselor Cleveland has some ideas about a hero initiative that will mesh in nicely over the next little bit to honor and salute local heroes.
Yep, that's the plan.
I've got a, I got a question for Frank, if he's on my line.
Yep, go ahead, you're there.
So Frank, you're the head, you're the CAO, so to speak, of recreation for the town and the municipality, and I'd like to ask you, in your professional recreational capacity, what would be the impact of a permanent closure of the only pool in the county? Public pool?
The closure of the pool would be devastating.
Closure, closed now, what if it just stayed that way? What would be the impact on recreational services in our county?
It would, you know, it would be severe. We, a community our size needs a community pool. I think everyone probably realizes that most people learn to swim in that pool. Yes, we have lots of lakes and rivers, but a community pool of our size is needed. It's not just a pool for a, 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 the, the whitecaps. I hear that a lot, that people say the only people that use the, the pool is the whitecaps, you know, advance team. It is a community pool, and I, I would be devastated if that pool closes.
Thanks. Frank, you mentioned a couple of user groups, and I agree with what you say on that part, but there's also a significant if it's not intended, but seniors could, participation in activities, both for recreation and physio and that kind of thing. Is that not correct?
Aquasize, lane swims, open swims, lots of grandparents with their grandkids. Yeah, it's, if, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just hearing this, I hope that the pool closure is, is not imminent.
Thanks for your answers, Frank.
Thank you.
Good. Any more questions for Frank?
Yep. Frank, the last time we chatted, I think you were going to do some Christmas light challenge or whatnot on the Yarmouth Just wondering how you made out with that? Any traction on that at all?
Um, not really, not to the extent that I had hoped. I, I haven't, I've been trying to stay in as much as possible, so I haven't been out and around as much to see if people are putting Christmas lights, Halloween decorations, Easter decorations. We did get a few responses, some people posting pictures to our Facebook page. I know in my community, in Arcadia, I know a couple of my neighbors have put their Christmas lights up. Really not, not any real big, big, you know, alert that hundreds of people were, were getting into that spirit.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you know, but we do have the white tap quarantine challenge going on, so you want to do some work there, kind of self-promote each, each way, get some good challenges out there, and maybe do what we tend to work together to the community.
Awesome, yes, I've been following that, Steve.
Thanks, Frank.
Any more questions for Frank? Good? Okay, thanks, Frank. Economic development, Natalie.
I decided my report. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Natalie? I have a question. No, I don't. Good, okay.
I have a question. I don't know if she knows the answer, but I'll try it. Natalie, what's the status at web.com? Is it all closed up now?
I couldn't answer that question. I, I haven't been given any updates directly on it.
You know, is the REN's involved in that situation at all?
Yes, the REN, Southwest Employment, NSBI, Labor and Events Development. There's a whole slew of people involved. Now, maybe perhaps some are, the CAO can add to that if they know any different.
Yeah, I think the answer is they're not, they're not closed down completely, no.
I drove by the other day, your worship, it didn't look very, didn't look anything like it used to look. There might have been two cars outside.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe Mara, if I can just add something.
Sure.
Uh, so in the last couple of weeks, one of the focuses I've been working with the Western REN and our regional economic development partners, and we formed a group called the Client Delivery Service Group. So in the town specifically, right now, I have Brenda Lebronder and Catherine Donchmal-Mooni, who's with ISAN. We've kind of divided our small business list, people that are in the personal services and food and beverage, and we're reaching out to them in many ways as we can, to make sure that they know that there is a deadline for this Saturday for the Small Business Impact Grant, that's the $5,000 grant. Um, so we want to get as many people, if possible, to apply for that, and then we're also providing them with a list of programs at the federal level that perhaps they could take advantage of through their banks or directly with the government. So that initiative is happening. I have reached out to some of our larger property managers in the town, just to kind of understand what the landscape is with their tenants. So far, they've had a couple of renters requesting the rent deferral program, and as much as possible, the landlords are supportive of that. But so far, no big shakeout, but it's, it's still too early to determine what, what this is going to look like, let's say, in May or June.
That's great that you're reaching out to them, because it's hard to maneuver some of these programs. So that's really helpful.
Your worship, you're right, it's hard to. Seems every day the Prime Minister steps up to the mic, he's throwing another billion here and a billion there. It was eight billion today. When's he gonna run out? Sorry, I'm a little old, and I wonder where, who's going to pay the bill when it all comes to. This was for students, for God's sake. Why can't they go home, spend the summer with their parents, for God's sake? Never mind. This is so generous, even I could apply for this stuff and get it. Jim, too.
Liberals don't run out of money.
No.
Neither does Jim Five.
And they have, the students need money to go back to school, I think that's what it is. Okay.
They should go take plumbing courses instead of these fake degrees they get up at some of those places in Halifax.
Oh, boy.
Thank you, Natalie. Any more questions for Natalie, by the way? We good?
Um, just, I, I, we talked about, we talked about web.com. However, how is, what's, is that appropriate at this point in the agenda, or is that something else that? What's happening there? Are we still on?
It will be ready in this.
Did we just lose him?
No.
Jim? No, he's sort of frozen.
Response after.
Okay, Jim, you have to ask your question again. Jim? Jim, can you hear us? Okay, we might have to get him to.
Hear Pam.
Can hear me and we can't, there, I could just hear you just now. But you, you're going in and out, so can you ask that question again?
What's the status of the infrastructure in Bar Harbor? And?
Okay, so. So number one, the governor gave the permission to keep working on that and so they are. They're doing all the work that they have to do. The problem now is that is a start date for obvious, the whole COVID piece. You know, the borders are closed, certainly the directive with regard to the cruise ships and all those pieces. So Mark McDonald keeps us pretty updated. But there's nothing, there's nothing except the work is, is ongoing. Anything else?
That's all I was asking, not you.
Yeah, okay, we good? All right, anything else for Natalie? You're welcome. Okay, good. All right, on to business. Notification of bylaw amendment under consideration policy. Jeffrey?
So your worship.
Sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to remove myself from this because of conflict.
Yep, okay.
Okay, your worship, last week when we met, we talked about the option or the opportunity that's available in the Municipal Government Act to use either radio or television as an alternative to newspaper for notification of council's intent to amend bylaws other than planning documents and subdivision documents. And that's under section 168.5 of the Municipal Government Act. And so looking for council to adopt those alternatives. And that doesn't mean, we talked about this last week, it doesn't mean that we will necessarily use either television or radio, but it will give us the alternatives. And we talked about last week that the, there are, I don't know, I hesitate to call newspapers, but I'll call them newspapers circulating, the lobster bay shopper and the Claire shopper that, that convey information, sell advertising. And I understand the provincial courts use that as, in the place of any other community newspaper. So for the time being, we would have three options available to us to notify the public. And so we would use, use pricing and relative effect of getting the word to people in choosing, choosing from those alternatives.
Okay, so I have a question. Thank you. Permit using radio and television as an alternative, so. Is that saying clearly that all three are in the mix? I might be asking you or Cliff.
Oh, well, you want me to comment on it, I'm going to be against it.
My question too, Pam.
I'll tell you why I'm against it, a couple of reasons. Number one. Okay, what was the question?
My question is, it said to permit using radio and television as an alternative to newspaper. So when we say that as an alternative, does that, does that say we're, because we are including newspaper? Right, we just don't have it right now.
Hit the nail on the head. The problem is that when we're gone, it's a slippery slope for the bureaucrats that can save money to take the cheapest route. And they'll do that. Protecting a free press is something that we shouldn't forget about here. And we're, it's challenged throughout North America because people are too damn lazy to read and really figure out what people are writing in the paper press. And we're fed all this god darn garbage on the, on the internet, three quarters of which is fake news, incorrect news or trying to sell damn ads. Industry's suffering, suffering because they can't sell ads as a result of that competition. But when you got a newspaper in front of you and it doesn't leave you for a week, you get a chance to look at it and criticize and accept or reject what they're trying to tell you. You get that darn thing coming up in MSN every day and it's this and that and it's selling you ads. It's, it's, it's not, it's not the same. And we ought to be supporting the press to the extent we can. And so I'm comfortable doing it because I think it's, it's a step, a step aside from where we should be. And I think you're right, though, the way that's worded, it's, it's too easy to do the television thing. So you got, you know, an ad on the telephone. It's like, it's like this weekend, you know, people are complaining about the notice it was giving on, on, on the incident there and Jesus, I don't have my computer on all day, every day. I don't even have, I have a Twitter account, never figured out how to use it, for God's sake. But just because they didn't give it that way, I mean, maybe it gets too easy. People slip into that. And maybe somebody thought, well, you know, I've got Twitter, everyone's got Twitter, I live in the city and I made a decision to put it out there instead of some other way. I know this month it was on CBC early morning. Never mind, I'm not going to vote in favor of it, frankly.
Okay, so, so the question is, Jeff, I'm going to go to you there. Because the question is, we're not saying we don't want to use our local newspaper. Saying we don't have it right now. We don't have a paper and in our hand.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there, you know, and I haven't, I have to confess, I'm not a regular reader of the two circulars that I mentioned earlier that are used by the province. They contain, in my view, for last time I looked, they contain nothing but ads and, and sort of classified sort of things, there's no editorial content, there's no reporting. So those, that's why I hesitate to call newspapers because I think they're more like a flyer than a, than a newspaper. Those, those do circulate and those are our options for, for printed options. I do appreciate Counselor Hood's comment about the, the fact that, that when you receive something like that, if you, if you read it, if you keep it around for a week, you're more likely to see it, maybe have another look at it. Somebody in your family notice it, that's, that's true enough. And so the, the, the thing that I guess that's got me thinking this way is A, having the option, B, losing the vanguard, which I think is a different beast altogether. I think that is a, a loss in terms of, of the press in our, in our area, reporting on, on matters. I think people used it differently than they used the lobster bay shopper, the Claire shopper, not to, not to at all take anything away from them and what they intend to be. But how people receive information today, you know, the minister, this minister and previous ministers have made it acceptable for, for council. For instance, this meeting, we don't have to stream this meeting under the law, but we do have to post the minutes. We post them on our municipal website. So in, and that's what's required. And so, you know, it seems like the, the minister in that order at least is, is giving a nod to the way that people are receiving official information from municipalities and towns is different than it was before. And the website currently is not an option, but radio and television are. And, and, you know, I, I know that, for instance, our local radio station, it, it reports on local news and local events. If we advertise in, in the Chronicle Herald, I think that's diminished somewhat the voice or the presence that Yarmouth has in, in the newspaper that you pick up in, in your home. So I think it's a, you know, I'm not, I think there is, there is a cost issue when it comes to the Chronicle Herald, there's no question. But, and, and so that would probably cause us to think more about the local options, whether, whether they contain editorial content or not, as well as radio and television, if this were available to us.
Jeff, what do you, what do you envision as television? Do you envision the local cable channel or do you envision the ATV or CBC scenario?
To be, your worship, to be honest about that, you know, I, I think that's one that I would be less excited about only from the perspective that I don't know that they have, there used to be a channel on, on the local cable provider that had notices that ran and that, and people used to somehow, sometimes watch that and see what notices were posted there. I'm not sure that that still exists. But I wasn't thinking about ATV or CBC, you know, those level. I was thinking more about local, local cable opportunities. But I would be less inclined, it's only in there because it is an option. But I'd be perhaps less inclined to be leaning in that direction than, than either radio or the other circulars that I mentioned before.
I kind of, I agree with Counselor Hood, probably about 75%, but I think, Jeff, you should, I, I have no problem with the local radio. Television, unless it's on the community channel, then, then outside of use, I don't think we should be using ATV and, and CBC. But I had no problem with local radio and, and local print. And I know, over the last couple of days, I know like Lunenburg, there's been several municipalities that have used the Chronicle Herald, but I think that's just because of, I think they've had the same thing happen to their local papers, happened to ours. It kind of all melts into one right now. So in light of what's happened over the last month and a half, I think you probably need a couple of alternatives to, to.
Oh, here's the thing. Oh, sorry. So, so here it is, we just need options because right now, the only reason we're not using local paper is because we don't have it. Unless I'm missing something.
Can I follow up to your worship?
Sure, yep.
So Greg, your, Greg's on there, yeah? So Greg, you and I know that there are a lot of notices that we can public, like publish, like an estate notice goes in the Royal Gazette. How many councils know what the Royal Gazette is?
I've never heard of it.
I mean, guess what? It has a full force of law when you put a notice in it. It's published by the province, been published for over, I don't know, 200 years, 150 or 75 years. And lawyers know about it, not to, some lawyers, lawyers my, my age, Greg does. So that's one, one, you know, you go to that extreme, which frankly, nobody ever reads a damn thing, except lawyers. But it satisfies some legal requirements that the government has to comply with when they're giving notices or lawyers when they're filing estates or other things. The Chronicle Herald is.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I have, I've stayed out of this and I will, I mean, I will not vote. Come on, people, do we really want to waste money on ads that nobody sees?
Your worship.
Trying to say.
Sorry, your worship.
To me, that's stupid.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Sorry.
Your worship.
That's stupid.
Your worship, the requirements for conflict of interest aren't just that you don't vote, but that you don't, you don't try to influence the decisions.
Back up, back up. Still stupid.
Wait, am I allowed to continue? Because I was only looking through.
Okay, go, sorry, Cliff.
Lord, yes, please continue. And so the Chronicle Herald is still a local paper. I get it every morning and I read it every morning. And there's more truth in that than there was on MSNBC News or CNN or any of the other. And I think, I think it's the last, whatever, independently owned paper north in Canada. And it's struggling. It may go away, but as long as it's there, I think we should be posting our, posting our advertisements in there. If it costs a bit more, it costs a bit more. You, you do a radio ad, to be blunt. How many times a day are you going to put them on so that people hear it? I don't listen to the radio all day. It might be on here for 15 minutes in the morning. You get a newspaper there, here all the way, maybe for two or three weeks, it might matter. And do you really want people to know what's going on or don't you? It's as simple as that. If you, if you leave a permanent record, and I agree with Jeff. The Claire shopper and, you know, those free, almost free ones. Anyway, I have nothing else to say, I just think you have to try and think about supporting a free press. And the last free press we had in our province is the Chronicle Herald. Well, Frank is free. I get it, every, whatever comes out every two weeks. Pay for it. They don't cover Yarmouth very much because we're too good down here.
I've been in it.
Must be true.
I've been in it twice.
Hope you're done.
Okay, Don, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I am. I, I mentioned this about, about the election and I'm mentioning it now. I think it's very important that we don't get stuck with one set of information being sent out. There are too many people that are looking at many venues in order to pick up the same information. If we get stuck with one, then we're shutting down an awful lot of other people that use the other menus. For example, I do listen to the radio every day. I do go on my computer every day. I don't answer back to everything, I may read a lot, but I'm finding it very difficult for us not to have other options. And I think at this particular time, I will be voting for a different option or several different options, if that's where we need to be. Remember, the minute you close one door, you shut down a group of people. I don't want to be the person that votes shut down. I'd like to be informed in every method that I can.
Hey, thank you, Don. So I'm probably reading this wrong because I thought the intention of this was that we, because we didn't have the local newspaper, and again, and I heard what Cliff said, but the Chronicle Herald is both expensive and everybody doesn't get it, that we just need to have alternatives. But I could have, I could have been missing, I don't think we're cutting one out or the other. It's, it's just that we, we don't have a local paper right now. Like a little, well, I know the Chronicles is a local paper, but it's not a local. He's friends with knowing how many people get the Chronicle Herald in Yarmouth.
So, so Pam, my point, my point would be that we need other options, just like he's suggesting. We need the other options at one time.
So as we go, we have television. Asking for, ask also Jeff for website. I just sent a letter to the minister about.
Yes, so, so that was, that was a motion that came from the council, I mean, was to request that as being a means of providing. We presently don't have that authority. So at this time, all, all that was, is, is within this proposal is what is currently permitted under the act.
And that is?
Sorry, radio and television.
Yeah. Yeah. No. No, newspaper is in the Act.
Yes, sorry, as alternatives, right, options are alternatives, yeah.
The only thing we're allowed to do is advertise in a newspaper. That's, that's what they're telling us we have to do. We're saying. Go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, so the, the Act says that you, you're required to use newspaper, but it provides in section 168.5 that council by policy can direct that radio or television can be used as an alternative to newspaper. And this is only for the notice that happens between first and second reading, and only for bylaws other than planning and subdivision.
I wasn't aware of that, so. So there is, there is one part of the process that requires a newspaper.
Yes, so once second reading has been passed. Yeah, when it's finalized, it has to be a newspaper.
Okay, I mean, if enough people are uncomfortable, we just have to vote for what we feel.
I'll call for the question, Your Worship.
Okay, question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary?
I voted aye.
Okay, are there any nays? No, I guess we're good. So that last minute there.
I listened to Don on that one.
Yeah. What?
Well, we've lost the railroads, the planes, the boats, the ferries.
You're on, you're on mute.
I said thanks, Cliff.
Well, just saying, we've lost the boats, the trains, the planes, and every other damn thing, we're going to lose the newspaper too, so we might as well make it complete here. Never mind, it's.
Man, you need, I'm going to send you a Snickers.
Look, Jeff and them have enough problems, and they need other alternatives, I have to.
Yeah.
I just hope that we, yeah, okay, I'm done.
All right. Town cleanup, Councillor Steve.
Oh, perfect, so as we've spoke about a few times here over the last, the white quarantine challenge is going pretty good, we have around 2,400 members so far. And someone pitched the idea to me to do a challenge for cleanup. So to encourage citizens to go out in their yard, clean up around and whatnot, and I was talking to Mayor Moot about that we thought it would be smart, obviously, to coordinate with our waste check and dump to make sure, you know, this kind of coincides and follows the rules. So just before we kind of put that out to the public and give them a challenge, we wanted to make sure that those other people are on board, and we're kind of all in the same loop, and we're not urging people just to throw things on the side of the road for pickup if it's not going to be there and whatnot, so. I guess just kind of do best practices and see if you can all work together with the agencies that would be involved to make sure, you know, things go smooth.
So Steve, I talked to Jeff earlier on this one, just wanted to make sure that we knew everything that was on the agenda. So I suggested a paragraph, a very general, plain English paragraph that you would be able to take when you're promoting this. So that people understand, number one, this is when the various pickups happen. As they are starting in May, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of pickups, it's just one, one week does one thing, another week does another one. And also, that that they need to abide by those rules, so we don't need washing machines and mattresses sitting on the side of the road for a month. So we would, we don't have to do this, my suggestion would be not to do it over like a week or a weekend, it could be over a couple of months. Like, I don't know what you think of that, but.
Yeah, whatever works best, I, I think my, my main idea to make sure that it's, you know, we're doing best practices, the best, you know, the most productive way we can, and if that means a month, month, and just so it works out, so like I said, it's, we're not causing any problems.
Yeah, okay, so Jeff, and then Don, and then Cliff.
Okay, so the, the, so it's, I think it's a great idea, and it's, it's very timely. I think the, the only concern that I had, and I think the mayor has, has expressed it, is, is that if the emphasis of some of the, some of the social media around it is, you know, for, for instance, on the last week of May, we do a white goods collection that last Friday. So if, if the emphasis is, hey, if you've got an old appliance sitting around, something you've been waiting to get rid of, it's this Friday, take it out Thursday night, put it at the side of the road, and by the time you get home from work on Friday, or whatever, it's gone. To, to promote the right thing at the right time. And get people to put it out not too far ahead. We used to have the spring and fall cleanup, and we got rid of those, but we, we provided our waste collection that everything that used to be acceptable at the side of the road during those spring and fall cleanups are now acceptable at some particular time through, through the month. So we can, we can take it all, as long as it comes out at the right time.
Yeah, construction.
Except construction and demolition debris, yes.
Okay, so Don.
I guess I have, I'm frustrated with this. I started cutting up some trees and branches and all that stuff in the middle of the week. Vehicle drove right past my house, didn't pick up one thing, I had to find another source to get rid of my, my branches, my leaves, my product. I saw the vehicle drive down the next street. So I was kind of really upset at that particular moment, so I'm just saying that if citizens in town are following the rules and following the procedure, then it's very important that if we're having, I don't know if it was our town that did it, and I'm assuming that it wasn't, I think it was a private agency, and that the private agency drove right past my house. I even was out that morning because a friend called me and said that it has to be under feet or something, I cut the branches with a saw by hand. Or they drove past, all under four feet. And I was pretty upset, you know what I mean? So I'm just saying that if we're going to follow this procedure, and I don't know who's going to be doing these pickups, but it's very important that they stop and grab whatever's there.
Okay, Jeff.
So that was my rant.
Yep.
Yeah, Jeff will respond to that, and we'll go to Cliff.
That's a good rant and a, and a good opportunity, so the, the hauler that does the collection of these, the white goods and the branches and so on, is the same hauler that collects our waste you know, all, all year long. They just have dates when they pick up these extra items, so sometimes things get missed. And, and so when that happens, we ask that you call the non-emergency line at Public Works, and then Chad is able to connect with the collector and find out what happened, and often, they'll come back around and get it, if it's been missed. It does happen.
Yeah, it does. Okay, Cliff, go ahead.
No, I'm all right, Your Worship, I, I just wonder if we have the capacity at the landfill right now, we've got some adjusted staff situations out there. If there's a big spur, if there's a big spurt of this stuff that's quite, you know, substantially more than what the normal pickup would be.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, that's, it's a valid point, Waste Park, and I think Cliff, you're on that board. You know, Glendon has been managing his staff in a way that, you know, it protects the business continuity, so we've, we've limited or restricted the access to the public to be able to bring things there themselves. I would be more concerned if this were one day or one weekend. I think this will come in fairly, you know, gradually, maybe over a month's period of time, and I think they should be able to handle that. It's, it's not unusual. What, actually, I was speaking to somebody last night about the spring and fall cleanup in the municipalities that happen over a two-week period. And they, you know, that I know does put a lot of pressure on the solid waste park, so. You know, we may have to play it by ear a little bit in terms of the fact that, you know, we don't want to overwhelm the waste park and, and the staff capacity to deal with stuff.
Well, that's a good answer, thank you, Jeff and Steve, I, I think.
People are screaming to clean out, like that, I get that all the time, people just want to clean up their properties. And they're asking why they can't go to the dump, and so this is the perfect way to do it.
But Pam, the Salvation Army and all the other people that have those places that make clothing and other things closed up, that's why I'm asking the question, are we going to get into the same situation if we do this, that's what prompted me to do that.
Yeah, gotcha.
It's a good point.
Yeah, good question. Okay, good. So do we need anything for that, Jeff, now?
No, I, I don't think so, I think if, if Steve is going, so, so what is the intention here, what is, is there a motion here, or is there?
Not unless you need a motion to. I just wanted you to write lines about when the pickups are, and that folks cannot leave their stuff out earlier, you can't put wood out with the metal stuff.
Okay, so, so, so why don't we have a motion on that, and it, it sounds like a communications task? And we'll work with Waste Check and Glendon to make sure that we get the message right.
And Mike, yeah.
Of course, Mike, yeah.
Don't move.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Okay, our correspondence for action, so Yasta regarding the tax deferral request, so I think I can probably answer that one in a nutshell. Yasta has written a letter with regard to, you know, basically the tourism industry, and they have requested the town of Yarmouth, Modi and Argyle, and NSFM consider developing a tax deferral program for tourism businesses, so. And the long and short of it is, as municipal counties, we can't do that. And we're not permitted under the MGA, but NSFM is working with the province right now. I was hoping to have something for tonight's call. So every, every Wednesday night, we have a call with Mayor's Ward and CAO, so after 90 people on that call. And it's easier than handling your room. So. Yeah, so we're on that, we're on that, and we're hoping to have something like in the next few days, go ahead, Phil.
I know we got Wade's signature on the letter, but what, give me a general idea what they would classify as a tourism business, something like the the old snack place down on Water Street, would that be classified as a tourism business, the, or every blooming thing, or, you know, what would, what would they classify as a tourism business, that's, I'm just wondering what, what they envision.
Yeah, so I think, I think.
You could almost incorporate in the town of Yarmouth, almost, almost.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Yep, every slug, folks.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so what we're working on is something that has some really strict criteria. So we'll, we'll be able to sort out the needs. So do we want to?
Do you have a time, do you have a timeline on that, Pam?
Oh, I, I was hoping for tonight, but I'm probably looking at another week.
Okay, so it's going to be, okay, good.
Yeah. Okay, so we good?
Well, if there's going to be a response to the letter, we should have a motion.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that we will follow, closely follow the direction given to us by the Union of Nova Scotia, well, Federation of Nova Scotia Municipalities and the Department of Municipal Affairs. And follow their guidelines.
Okay, good.
Seconding then.
Seconding it.
Any more discussion, anyone?
Question, question, oh, go ahead.
I wonder if you might frame that a little bit differently, Philip. We don't want to be bound by what they do. But we ought to, we ought to be taking it under consideration.
Yeah, I'll take that, Your Worship, I'll say we'll take under, under consideration the guidelines, direct guidelines and/or recommendations set up by the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities and the Department of Municipal Affairs, and along the fall in, within, within the scope of the Municipal Governance Act.
Okay, and I would add to that that because municipalities are not permitted to do tax deferrals. So they understand.
I think that would be included, Your Worship, in that MGA part.
Right on, okay. All right, who seconds that?
Don.
Okay, any more discussion?
Question, Your Worship.
All those in favor? Contrary?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, additions, tax deferral, CAO. You're, you're blocked.
How's that?
That's better.
Perfect.
Perfect, all right. Just bringing up the item now. Sorry. Okay, so the item and, and apologize for springing this on you, and you don't need to deal with it today if it, if, if it is incredibly short notice. So, but I'll introduce the topic, and then we can talk about what to do about it afterwards, so. I did send out an email earlier today, and it's relating to tax accounts that we currently have under tax arrears payment arrangements. So council about 10 years ago passed a policy that allows us for accounts that are in arrears to set up payment schedules that requires them to pay every month so much, which includes over a run, run of the year, they would pay a year and a half worth of taxes to, to, towards getting caught up, plus, of course, the interest. And we, they have set monthly payments, and if they miss a payment, then they go into, automatically go into a tax sale. Given what has gone on in, in the world and in our local economy, I'm a little concerned that as, as this, as the next payment comes due, which will be next week, be the April payment, and then May and June, that we may trigger some tax sales on people who've been affected you know, by either loss of work or, or loss of business to have their property suddenly up for tax sale, what happens when your property comes up for tax sale is that the, the entire amount is now due and needs to be paid within a, a short period of time, otherwise the tax sale process continues, and at the end of it, you're at risk of losing, losing your property. That can be a little bit awkward and unfortunate, and if, if in fact, our current situation doesn't go too much beyond the next several weeks or a couple of months. So what I was suggesting is that we consider providing an opportunity for those under these tax arrangements to be able to skip three payments. So get through till July, understand sort of what happens in our local economy and the world economy by that time. Maybe by then, tax payments under these agreements could resume, and maybe things will be okay. At the very least, by the time we get to June, we'll have a much better idea of the scope and scale of, of the problem as it relates to property taxes. So what would be required would be a statement similar to what I presented here, that for April, May and June of 2020, council will allow property, property owners with tax arrears payment arrangements to skip the required monthly payments. Interest will continue to accrue on all outstanding balances on a monthly basis. So no, no amount is being written off. Tax interest is continuing to accrue, so there is still an incentive to make the payment if you can. But there is the relief of the requirement to make the payment if, if you're in a, a crisis situation.
Jeff, has he given any consideration to make it on application?
So the, the only challenge I would see with that, Cliff, is that, or sorry, Councillor Hood, is that Russell is, is working from home and. that Russell is working from home and Russell manages those twenty-five or so agreements that we have. And it may be challenging for him to do that work, get these applications to me and process them. So, the thought was, and I'm not shutting that idea down, but the thought was is if we make this available, he can communicate that out and make it clear to them that if they can make their payments, it is in their financial best interest to do so. But if they need to skip one, two, or even three of the payments, that we aren't going to suddenly throw them into the tax sale process.
Yeah, I have a concern that everybody will take advantage of it, whether they need it or not. I guess that's part of the, but there's a lot of people probably are going to need some help here. So got to weigh that against some potential abuse there. There's no real financial abuse if they have to pay the interest throughout, so.
Sorry, Cliff. Can you remind me what the interest rate on that again?
So our current interest rate is fourteen percent.
And I think some of the municipalities I saw across the province has actually lowered their rate for overdue accounts. I've seen low at ten. I haven't seen anything less than that. And I, low. And as high as they've lowered it down, some of it's fifteen percent. So they're, we're not bad, I don't think. Could be better, but we're not bad. Because like you said, we don't want to be the, we don't want to be used as a bank, right?
We want to, sorry. We want to provide some relief, but it can't be free relief. And the interest rate, for me, interest at ten percent is probably around the perfect number because it's still encouraging people to pay. But it's not so heavy as, it's not so heavy. I think HRM went down to ten as well.
I'd support going to ten. You know, we've always used that as a, as a hammer, really, to make sure people pay on time. And given the current interest rate environment, ten percent is still a pretty big hammer, frankly. It should be. I agree with you, your worship, on that.
I think, I think too, Cliff, several years ago, we started to make the arrangements for the tax agreements. The interest rate on overdue accounts at that time was, Jeff, this guy might be correct, but I'm pretty sure it was eighteen percent. We lowered it down to fourteen. Does that sound right?
Exactly, yes.
If you did, if you did that for the tax agreements, would you have to, we would have to do that right across the board, right?
We would, yeah.
Yeah.
And would that include, we charge the same amount, Cliff? Maybe you might not know, or Jeff? Do we charge the same amount on overdue water accounts too? Is it the same percentage?
I believe so, but Jerry's on the line here. He would be able to answer that.
Okay.
Jerry?
Yeah, yeah. Now, the interest rate is the same on both water and tax bills right now. At fourteen percent.
So Jerry, if we do, if we do lower the, if we do lower the amount of percentage, do you have to make any adjustments to the budget you said that you just completed?
Not a lot.
Okay.
I mean, the idea and the reason I think that you're doing this is the thought that people won't be paying. So, you know, the actual budget number would be offset with a lower interest rate, but potentially a higher outstanding balance as well. So.
Yeah.
Almost leave the interest budget unchanged.
What it does is it, if you have a, you know, the cash flow situation probably won't be a whole lot different because people are going to have difficulty paying. And so we're going to be faced with dealing with the cash flow reduction in any event. So. But here's a question, Jerry, do we require a bylaw amendment? Or is this strict policy in terms of if we, if we want to reduce the fourteen percent to ten?
This is the policy, I believe.
Yeah, that's, sorry, that's approved every year with the annual budget typically. So it's a policy statement.
Are we in a position to make a motion tonight and proceed with that?
What I would suggest on both of these items is that you refer them to council, but I would suggest that if you're going to meet next week to talk budget, that you could consider them at that time. It would be timely if you were able to do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Good. So is there a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for committee of the whole that we proceed at budget to consider, and if deemed advisable by council to approve a reduction in the overdue tax interest rate from fourteen percent to ten.
Okay.
What about, Cliff, what about, I'll second Councilor Hood's motion. Cliff, what about a motion that?
We're gonna need two.
Yeah, what about a motion in deference to what Jeff outlined?
Well, I guess two things, yeah.
We're gonna need two. Okay, so there's that motion on the table, seconded. Is there any more discussion on that one with regard to the fourteen down to ten? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, good. And then the second motion with regard to what thing? Okay, so who wants to make that motion?
So moved. Three months relief, right?
Correct.
The whole package is recommended by Jeff, which includes interest and.
And second.
Okay, so it was seconded by Steve. So moved by Dawn, seconded by Steve. Any more discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, public participation.
Thank you, your worship. I just, something caught my attention, actually, to, Councilor Hood liked this, I'm almost like my old buddy Vic Eldridge, two, two public participation meetings, one from the town of Lunenburg, public hearing online, Zoom webinar, and then you have written, written.
Missions.
Comment on that. That's on Monday, April the twentieth, Jeff, if you want to look at that Chronicle Herald. And then one from the municipality of the county of Colchester is, they'll be holding a public hearing on Thursday, April the thirtieth at six PM. This meeting will be conducted virtually with the ability to listen live online. And I think they have the public to make written or verbal submissions on these applications. I'm just wondering, Jeff, or maybe to chair the PAC, if they have a look at those two ads on the twenty, twentieth, I think, and twenty-second, or twentieth and twenty-second in the newspaper, just to see if we could do something like that if we had to.
So, your worship, can I speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, so the minister ordered that meetings such as this were to happen virtually. And we have been now for, I think this is probably our fifth meeting. What isn't clear to me is whether or not hearings that required providing the opportunity for the general public to participate fully in commenting on things such as planning amendments and subdivision bylaw amendments, if those meetings also qualified for this format. So we sought clarification from the province, and the answer was, well, talk to your own solicitor, and if you're comfortable, then proceed. The problem I have with that, with respect, with all due respect to our own solicitor, is if we are challenged by a developer. So we make an amendment, and we're challenged by somebody who disagrees with it, or maybe it doesn't go through, and we're challenged by the developer, or somebody who wanted to speak to it, and for whatever reason didn't engage in the platform. They might argue it wasn't a legal way to have a public hearing. And the province, by saying use your own solicitor, is saying they're not going to take a position. So that concerns me because we would be fighting potentially a legal battle, battle of fifty municipalities fighting legal battles on the basis that we think what we did was right without the backing of the province. So, fast forward, the minister issues another order that says something to the effect that anybody corporate constitute under an enactment of the province that's required to have in-person meetings would be able to do so virtually. So I asked the question through our municipal advisor, just for clarity, does this mean that, that, does this give us the cover, the legislative cover, to do the planning amendments? And have the hearings such as there in Lunenburg and other places? And the answer came back, consult with your solicitor, and if you're comfortable, then proceed. So the question I asked is, why can't the minister, you know, if that's his intention, why can't we not get a clarification as we did on the transit order that he issued? Why can't we just get a simple clarification so that, so that we can proceed and know that if we're challenged by somebody who doesn't like something that's gone on in a planned amendment, that we've got the backing of the ministry of the province in what we've done? And so I'm told, be patient, and that may eventually happen, but it hasn't happened yet. And I talked to Pam about this, and I'm just a little uncomfortable with passing amendments in our planning documents that somewhere down the road, someone's going to decide that we did it improperly, and we're going to have to redo, redo the work that we would otherwise.
Okay, I'm just wondering, Jeff, if it's a situation where something had to be done or a public participation meeting to move something along. I just wonder if we have the opportunity, but your worship, if you're in contact with the traffic, could you bring that up again, please?
Yeah. I think the idea, I mean, I don't disagree with what Jeff's saying. I think the idea was, they gave us permission to hold meetings virtually. So a meeting is a meeting is a meeting. I don't know.
Because on one of them here, it says the town of, the webinar, the Zoom webinar allows for two-way interaction. And I think the other one, you have to have. So anyways, there's two, they even got little different variations there, but.
And it's more than just them doing, it's quite a number doing. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, no, you know, the ability for somebody to access a public hearing, when you're talking about property rights, you know, it's a big push in the province. The province is throwing hundreds of millions of dollars at rural internet, right? Because people don't have access to this kind of opportunity. You know, even today, we're having some difficulties with video and with audio, when Jim's trying to ask questions, he's cutting in and out. So I guess the concern would be is that that a planning amendment where somebody's making investment because of changes we're making in their planning bylaw would actually not get properly done, and we could find ourselves in a bit of a legal mess because somebody argued they didn't have access to the meeting, to the public hearing, to state their view and be heard.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe I'm being too risk averse, you know, if you want me, if you want me to kick this over to Greg for him to review and provide counsel with his legal opinion, I'm perfectly fine with that.
Whatever it's worth, I'm comfortable with Jeff's position on this. I am very much so. I don't know where Greg would be on it.
Okay. What do you want to do, folks?
It's Greg. I just wanted to say, yeah, what Jeff had said. I haven't actually looked at it, so I haven't given my opinion one way or the other on it. So that's just, just to clarify, I guess, that.
I'm happy with what Jeff said, your worship.
So Greg, let's put it another way. If we follow the Municipal Government Act and the Planning Act as presently passed and on the books, we're safe. Am I not correct?
Well, yeah, that's right. And, you know, the town has a procedure already set up for the public participation process. So if there's going to be, you know, a change, and if that was okay, well, we'd have to look at changing the policy for that. And you're right. You know, that part of it I haven't looked at. If there's any saving provisions in the MGA that might say, well, as long as you, you know, adopt the program, it's going to be fine. You know, that's a possibility. I'm not saying there is, and I'm not saying there isn't, but. I guess the other thing is, is there anyone who has any amendment that they want to proceed with that we're telling, no, we should wait, right? I'm not aware of it. Is there anyone, Jeff?
So there is, there is an application. It was a strategy and bylaw amendment that was under consideration. Glenn Dunn was the applicant. He was looking at doing a marijuana growing and manufacturing processing facility in a building he owns just off of Stars Road. We did have public participation at the committee level before everything happened. And so his application is presently stuck at waiting to come to council. Now, I've spoken to him about the dilemma that we have a few weeks ago, and he hasn't called back and asked me any questions about, you know, are we proceeding as some of these other municipalities are? I've been working the other side of it and just trying to get clarification. The minister was okay with proceeding virtually with public hearings.
So anyway, I'm asking you to ask that question, but.
So, your worship, just to end, I guess, my side or my part of this, I did speak as recently as yesterday with our municipal advisor. And we had a follow-up conversation about this very issue. And, you know, she didn't have a sense that we would get clarification from the minister within a day or so, but I did talk to her about Mr. Dunn's application. So that gave her a real concrete example of the situation that's being held up because we don't have that clarification. So I don't know if that will shake something loose, and maybe we'll get that clarification sooner rather than later, or if it's going to be sort of in the queue. And I appreciate they've got a lot of other things that they're dealing with, including village elections and how to deal with that in this environment. So.
All right. So did we have a motion there?
No, no motion, your worship.
Okay, so we're good. Jeff, go ahead.
Just, you know, Greg raised some interesting ideas there. If you want to refer to the solicitor to review, I think that might be appropriate.
I'll be taking that motion, your worship.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question.
Questions. Prowd, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, that's it. We got anything in camera there, Jeff?
No, not today.
Just hang on here.
Hi, Joan.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, hi, Joan. I see Joan at a distance, yeah.
How do you like that?
Hey.
Love it.
She just joined me here, so good.
Jeff, suddenly your screen is prettier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I haven't been outside for three months, four months.
We're all good, your worship. Thanks.
Okay, you guys.
Thank you. Motion for adjournment.